Everyone for coming this evening and welcome them to the city council meeting. We'll have, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance and then we'll have that followed by our invocation this evening brought by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the lie of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, I thank you for this city. I thank you for the growth and the things that we've been seeing over the past several years and we thank you for that and we thank you for the people here and the people that we pray that more will continue to come into Bonner. And tonight, as usual, Father, we ask you to be with us and to bless us. And we also ask you to give us wisdom and guidance as we conduct the business on behalf of the people. Father, it is an honor to serve this city. We pray that we never take that for granted. We thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Very good. Moving along to our first item, which is citizens' concerns and seeing none, we'll roll right along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the February 25th city council meeting, claims for city operation, claims for public housing authority, December financial reports, and the Eastern Kansas Multi-County Task Force Agreement. Anything to be pulled by the staff? Seeing nothing from the citizens. Any questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and we approve the consent agenda as ordered.
One second.
Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes. Wonderful. Onto our regular meeting agenda, the item number one, the inter-agency agreement between the Kansas City Police Department and the Bonner Springs Police Department. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Billy Knapp, Chief of Police, have a request tonight to allow the authorization of inter-agency agreement between KCKPD and Bonner Springs Police Department. Historically, Bonner Springs Police Department provides all security services at Providence Amphitheater and Kansas City Renaissance Festival. What we have lacked is jurisdictional authority along State Avenue, which leads to high-volume traffic for both venues. Traffic gets backed up, but we have no authority to direct traffic out there. This agreement will allow us limited authority during those events, prior to, during, and after the event to utilize our services for traffic enforcement to remove cars out of the area. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you very much. Nothing else? Seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion authorizing staff to initiate the inter-agency between the KCKPD and Bonner Springs PD.
Second. Moved and seconded.
You paused.
And we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
Tom, were you going to mention something about? Well, I think you covered it when we were talking. I'll refer to you on the question because I know what you're going to ask, so.
Okay. Sir?
I'm curious to hear what the citizens.
Yeah. Name?
It sounds like the only thing we can do is to try to work together.
Yeah.
Yep. Surprising that we need to.
I'm just waiting for Tom.
I feel like a moment's.
The pressure is on.
Enlighten us.
First of all, I agree with, I appreciate this and I think we need to do this. I am curious, though, is the other agencies, is there a reason why they wouldn't be involved in their jurisdictional area?
Predominantly, it's resources. That's generally what we find as far as staffing, those resources in that area. They have other higher call priorities. We're going through a safety assessment right now for services there. I've talked to Chuzigler and there's a significant response to get us assistance when we need even emergencies, so that kind of precipitates this. They kind of reserve all their resources for their calls rather than outline this.
So they don't staff for that and so they're not able to help with that and so that's why we need this.
Then what about the Sheriff's Department? Do they not get involved in anything of this nature?
We historically have had the Sheriff's Department assist us at Providence Amphitheater. Organizationally, a lot of organizations are withdrawing those types of services because of who's paying them. For example, Sheriff's Department's compensated directly from the venue. Then you get some questions on whether they have appropriate authority because they're being paid as a private contractor to the venue. Work comp claims come in and a whole bunch of other things and the Sheriff's, a lot of agencies kind of have taken a position of we're not going to be involved in any type of extra security.
Then if we're talking about putting additional staff members on State Avenue, what type of drain does that put on our workforce?
We utilize the assistance of, we have some officers assigned for parking directly and we also have, we get the assistance from the fire department. But we have lacked historically is just any ability. We can't go out on State Avenue and say, you don't go this way, you don't go that way.
So we have the resources to cover it, it's just the jurisdiction.
Good.
And this will do that?
Yes.
Do we have the budget to cover it?
Yes.
Very good.
Well, you're after your end.
I've got one more on that. If all that area is owned by the Board of Commissioners, essentially Wyandotte County, are we getting extra funds from Wyandotte County to be able to do these things since they receive sales tax dollars and stuff like that?
Yes, there are revenue sources that come into the city. The city receives proceeds from ticket sales, alcohol tax, probably other sales tax for other items that I'm unaware of. The venue also reimburses for all law enforcement services out of the venue.
Okay. That's most curious. Thank you, sir.
But since the city limit ends at the south curb of State Avenue, this gives us the authority to go out onto State Avenue, both sides, and control traffic and control and do the job you need to do.
Yes.
Very good. Other questions, concerns, comments, please?
A thought there, so then you will have authority to be out there and direct traffic, give tickets, et cetera?
If necessary. The only requirement according to the agreement is we have to make sure that we like KCK now for any of their crime static recording.
I mean, I think it's important that they keep there.
Did you find they were pretty well receptive to this whole?
More so than other.
I was going to say. Oh, okay. All right.
Nothing else? Vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number two, the police vehicle donation to the USD 204 Criminal Justice Club.
Billy Knapp, Chief of Police, again. Bonner Springs Police Department has had a longstanding relationship with the Criminal Justice Club at USD 204. We continue that partnership by providing instructors, resources as needed. This year, in speaking with Mr. Davis who went to the school district, he has a need for a police car to practice for some state competitions and other challenging faces in the Criminal Justice Club education. We're unique right now this year that we had an abundance of cars that had to come out of service due to numerous maintenance needs. In conversations with other vendors, Knockbar Automotive has expressed an interest in preparing any car we had to help facilitate this donation to them. And we thought it was a great opportunity to partner with USD 204 and provide them an asset to be able to further their education.
Cool.
Great.
Seeing anything else? Nothing else? Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here?
Motion for a motion?
Oh, yes, I do. Sorry. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Bonner Springs Police Department donating a 2013 Dodge Charger police vehicle to USD 204 Criminal Justice Club for use within their program.
Second.
Wow.
Now we'll start down here, sir.
School district.
Very good.
Just one, it was good to see that we are having some of our local vendors step up and help us with some volunteer. On their, I noticed that it says donating their services, so if it does require parts, is there going to be a cost to the city for the parts to repair those vehicles?
No, Mr. Trent prepared the agreement as it is, so any further costs, once we, once the council authorizes this and they sign off on it with the school board, it is theirs wholeheartedly with any maintenance, registration, insurance, all that.
I was just talking about the, Knockbar was donating services, so I didn't know if that included the parts?
Yes.
Because, okay, so it does include the parts, okay. No questions.
Do we have to remove any of the logos, artwork, identification?
We're going to remove the decals as part of our just general operation. The lighting, we're going to leave on there because that's part of their.
Training.
Training piece and we'll remove that when they decide to get rid of the vehicle.
Thank you.
I bet you could probably get it, some vinyl letters on there donated by a local rap company to suit their needs, brand it like they'd like to have it branded.
I am so glad to see the connection between the school district and our young people. Wasn't there for, I mean, it wasn't there the same way 30 years ago, so.
I can vouch for that.
Man, an actual police.
You still just got to do a vaccine in the car?
Sir? Nothing else? Vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto the third item, TASER purchase agreement. I would hope that's also you.
Billy Knapp, Chief of Police, have a request tonight to authorize the five-year agreement to purchase 20 new TASER X7 devices for the police department. The Bonner Springs Police Department currently issues TASERS to its officers. When I came here in 2017, we were using what was called the X26 TASER at the time and those have since been removed from service, leaving a deficiency within the police department. We were able to make do until budget allowed to kind of advance an additional purchase. The purchase agreement will allow us to purchase more units at a cheaper rate than just buying them outright as we've historically done.
Very good. Seeing no other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion authorizing a five-year purchase agreement to acquire 20 new TASER X7 devices.
Seconds.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
Thank you. This is, this, I was looking at everything and this is great and we want you guys protected.
Thank you.
Hey, since you guys are rocking the social media thing, when do we get a video of one of you guys using it?
When you do something wrong.
Was that a volunteer councilman?
Yeah.
That's why I didn't make the motion. I figured it'd be me.
Mr. Mackey, run.
That's what I was expecting.
Nothing.
Sir?
Tom?
No, he said nothing.
Good.
Very good. Seeing no other comments, questions, concerns? Vote, please.
Gerley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Don't tase me, bro.
You did not.
The YouTube video.
Don't do anything to, yeah, okay.
The YouTube video that is.
Mackey, voluntary for that video.
The most.
I wouldn't be totally opposed to that. I'll do it.
I almost.
I want to record it. I'm going to need a.
Onto the next item because.
Special request in the future, but I'll do it.
Onto the next item because there's a movie that has it in it. Item number four, the Shite Water Main Replacement Project. Staff?
Good evening, members of the council. Frank Daybart, Public Works Director. This is a project that's going to replace a combination of four and six-inch lines and it's going to make a connection between your 12 inches, so it's going to, it's going to complete a connection and complete a loop, which is very important. The main driver of the project courses to get water pressure and everything for fire flows down to a, gosh, I'm trying to remember, it's industrial area, luring industrial area.
Awesome.
And approved, requests is to approve construction contract with Rodriguez Mechanical Contractors in the amount of 326,884 and there was a lot of competition for this. So I think we were probably bidding at about the right time and I'm thinking that's probably the reason why it was so much below the investment.
Oh, good deal.
My hands are any questions?
Thank you very much. Nothing else? Nothing from the citizens? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the contract for Shite Water Line Main, or yeah, Water Lane Water Main? Okay, Shite Lane Water Main Replacement Project to Rodriguez Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of 326,884.
Second. That's why I didn't read.
With this alternating sides, we'll start down here.
No questions here.
Sir?
It didn't mention it in there, so I just wanted to double check. I mean, you reviewed the, their bid and there was no issues, no errors or anything?
Variances, no deviations. Personally, I'm not familiar with this particular contractor. I haven't been in this area very long, but other members of our staff.
Attentive and manner.
And also city engineer.
I was really surprised. I think all the years I've been on here on council, I don't think I've ever seen this many bids for a project.
Competition breeds the best, so that's a great, I've known Rodriguez Mechanical for years, so they've been in Kansas City forever. Good deal.
Well, this, this water line in the middle of the road, is it going to close shite while they replace it?
That's a good question. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I think there's a good portion of it that is actually not on the road.
Okay.
But I know there's railroad things that are going to happen.
Thanks.
And a lot of rock, potentially. Hopefully that's been planned for. I really hope they planned for that.
We don't want surprise.
Right. It's not, rock is not a surprise.
Well, okay.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, because, yes, exactly.
You're right.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just really, it was wonderful that it was so much lower. When I was reading them, I thought I'd read it wrong, you know, numbers, but wow.
Sir?
Happy to see the government got it wrong in the correct direction.
I think, seeing nothing else, no other questions? Yes, please.
I might follow up to Councilmember Gerley's question. If they do have to, some of that pipe is under the roadway surface, will they have to tear up the road?
Right, yes.
The only reason I'm concerned is that is our truck route, so I didn't know if alternative plans were being looked at, K7.
There is boring, it can bore underneath their roadway, but it may or may not be available depending on rock.
Rock.
Or other things, so I don't believe that it's, it's something we'd have to pay for in addition.
Hopefully we can keep one lane open.
Keep us up to date and let us know if that's.
Client calls for trenching in those areas.
Okay.
Very good. Nothing else? Vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number five, the Shite Water Main Replacement Project Professional Services.
Frank Daybart, Public Works Director, again. This is in agreement with Wilson and Company to provide the construction services agreement in the amount of $65,650 and of course, this is a project we just approved, this will provide all of the inspection and review, documentation, asphalt plans, all of the things from start to finish related to the construction and project management of this project.
Very good. Thank you very much. Nothing else to add? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve contract with Wilson and Company Incorporated to provide construction-related services associated with the Shite Water Main, I just went blank on me.
In the amount of $65,650.
Okay, Shite Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $65,650. I was looking here.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here, sir.
No.
No.
Nothing additional?
Very good. Very good. Vote, please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto agenda item number six, renewal of the Mark Operation Green Light Agreement. Staff?
Frank Daybart, Public Works Director. This is an actual renewal of an agreement with Mark on this Operation Green Light. The cost, we have four units that they, lack of better word, they control the signalization on four of the traffic signals. And the previous agreement had those at $800 per unit and that has now gone down, so it's $600 per unit for a total of cost of $2,400. This does help us out quite a bit. I'm not sure that it helps, in the case that you were talking, well, no, I guess it would. It's whenever you have a large activity, a lot of traffic, things like that, but I'm not sure we have any of those lights up in that area, but there's probably Operation Green Light still impacts the control of all that traffic in that area, so. With that, I'll see if there's any questions, try to answer them.
Very good.
This is a renewal, so this is something that's been for this council quite a number of times, I think, before.
Very good. Seeing no other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion approving the cooperative agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for membership in Operation Green Light at an annual cost of $2,400 and authorizing staff to execute the agreement.
Moving. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
If you say it was six traffic lights, no more. Oh, poor man. Just a question and I'm not sure who might be the best one to answer this and if you can't even answer it. I think it's a good idea to have these, but I do know we've had some issues in the recent past where traffic does start to back up and we've had to actually deploy officers out there to control traffic at like the Kansas Avenue intersection.
Yes.
Is it related to an issue involving this or is it just the system got overwhelmed with traffic flow?
We've recently had issues at both Kansas Avenue and Canaan where both of those lights seem to repeatedly be non-functioning at times. As far as the cause, I could not tell you what the cause is.
I believe the one, there were some issues at the Kansas Avenue intersection that would be related to practical issues on the poles at some point in time where there was some blurbs in the system too, so that affected it, so that will recycle the system and it will turn red lights, so you'll have everybody stopping. We have had issues at Canaan, that's more related to northbound traffic. One of the issues that's, well, the issue that's there is that the camera that actually that we have that's part of, somewhat part of this, points at traffic going into Canaan or that commercial area. It does not pick up anybody going northbound. There is not any room on the current system on those poles to add another camera there, so that will likely have to be a fix at some point in time when the state does that, that area, that tapering area. We do have significant backup on there, especially during concerts event, concert events, Renaissance Festival, between the hours basically of 4:30 to 6:30 in the morning as well, so that's, those are pretty much the two, but again, they, they are affected by green light. Those aren't monitored as best as they can. We do hear from KHP and others about that on occasion as well, but we don't, we don't have anything on northbound and Canaan is simply coming what would be westbound.
How do they choose the locations for this?
This was, yeah, this was originally, this is a bigger system, so Mark actually has a, it's part of Scout, which is a Missouri program. Basically what they do is they monitor several different intersections throughout the metro area. They get basically based on call, our traffic volume, is a big functioning part of it, like I said, they're, they're all controlled within, within Mark and they're all in Kansas City metro area.
Ma'am?
I just can't believe something's just $2,400.
It's a bargain.
It's my understanding back when we did this the last time that it was the four lights and their synchronization between the four of them. There isn't an ability to synchronize these with north and south of Bonner Springs. They seem to indicate that it was too far away, although we do see traffic pulse through Bonner Springs because of those other areas. They don't recognize that, I guess. And, yeah, just any, any concerns, pass them along to the green light and have them adjust or review their timing. We need for 600 bucks a light, we should have it refined. I mean, or continually refined, I guess, is how I look at it.
That's somewhat of the issue is that K7 has, continues to get more and more traffic on it. I think we're at, what, 27,000 cars a day? So that's, that's part of the rationale as to why these areas are located, are located where they are is to keep that traffic flowing as best as they can. So I know they've cycled through in the last couple of years trying to do different delays to this section or left turns here or left turn at the beginning of the green light or left turn at the end of the green light. I don't think evidently that they've found a best way of doing that as a, as a way.
It is nice to be able to drive through all four of the stoplights if you're minding the other traffic regulations and from the north to the south or the south to the north. It seems as though if you're just a little under the speed limit, you have more of a chance of getting through them all than if you're a little over the speed limit, but not that I would be over the speed limit. I don't know if that's something with their timing or not, but.
Very good. No other questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion. Or no, I would call for a vote, please. Gosh, two mistakes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gerley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Another hard night of unanimous decisions. Moving on to our report section. First, the city manager's report.
Really quickly, just a couple of notes. Just want to say thank you to Greg Kendall with Wyandotte County. They came through, him and Marsha Harrington, and attended the Chambers luncheon last week. I was glad to attend that and hear a lot of the initiatives that they're doing. I know some of you were also there, but again, a great opportunity to hear from them. Hopefully we'll be seeing them more frequently out here to do similar types of conversations. Speaking of conversations, I want to thank everybody that attended coffee and conversations of the library last week. I attended. Several police officers were also there as well, and community members. And again, just a good opportunity, and hopefully something we can continue into the future. Thank you to the Historical Society. Their annual event was on Thursday, or excuse me, Thursday, Friday. Again, several council members were there. A good opportunity to just see what all, what they're doing as well as a great presentation on the Kansas River. And then also wanted to note, I'm currently working with the Assistant County Administrator about an initiative that they're working on with the municipal government, Adopt a Spot. Basically, a program whereby folks can come in and adopt their location, clean it up, maintain it. And also with that, they would get a sign posted in the area just to join that, similar to Adopt a Roadway. But again, initiatives that we're trying to get somewhat off the ground. Also wanted to note that City Hall, the new police station, there was a, a meeting last week for bidders who were thinking that. On Friday, I will tell you that this entire room, council chamber, including staff table, as well as the hallway, was full with contractors. We're getting back to competition. Reeds good prices as far as we're concerned is hopefully going to be, well, the same as what it was for Water Main Replacement. And then lastly, just want to note that city, city crews have been out diligently working in between snow events. Hopefully we're done, trying to catch potholes as best as we can. So I would just note that if you do notice any potholes, just please report those down to Public Works. You can also submit an online request form, which would be the most ideal way of handling that, so that we can address those as we're able. But with that, that concludes my report.
Very good.
Oh, I did want to say that you had, be sure to set your clocks ahead one hour.
Spring forward.
Spring forward.
Oh, we forgot one clock.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's why the workshop ran over.
I noticed something with numbers.
Yeah.
Very good. And we'll start the city council's opportunities?
Did what I was going to say.
Okay.
Sir?
Well, just a couple of things quickly. I want to thank staff of Public Works. This has been a rough winter on them, and they have, it seems like all the snows we were getting were over the weekend, so I know they have put a lot of time in over the weekend. But we really appreciate the job that they did. Secondly, the police training simulator, the city manager commented in here that it's up and running, will there be some opportunities for council members to come and observe?
Absolutely. And participate.
Ooh. The last time I was at police academy, I shot the guy with a cellphone, so no, I'll just observe.
Jordan's on.
I second.
Basically, there's just a little bit of setup process that has to occur.
Well, I prefer not to set up just for when I come. If, if you advise us when somebody is going to do some training, then I might try to make the opportunity.
It's pretty routine. The only thing we have to do just to maintain the system is whenever we're done for the night, shut it down. And that just depends on what staff's working on for the day. We're, we're trying to keep it available at all times, so everybody has the opportunity to use it as much as they can.
Okay.
Neat.
Okay.
A couple of things. This has absolutely no pertinence to Bonner Springs at all, but did we ever hear how the Lawrence parking lot standoff ended?
Lawrence?
Do you hear anything about that? I was hoping you'd have the "in" on that. Two cars nose to nose in a parking lot, neither one of them would back up. I just want to hear how it ended. Sorry.
Wow.
That was on the Lawrence?
Yeah, follow the Lawrence Twitter page.
Yeah, they, the police left.
You're right.
And eventually the people left, and they.
Eventually they figured it out, no shots fired? Okay. I have heard a lot of, a couple of comments from different contractors about the city hall bids and how great the response has been. Couple of H VAC companies said they're being pursued by different contractors. Who do I reach out to about the Bonner, the city website updating the shopping opportunities?
I would reach out to Amber.
Thank you. And related, do we know if Marble Day will happen this year?
I have heard that it will likely not occur, just because the parties that have traditionally been involved in that are not wanting to do that. So we are continuing to have that conversation. The city still remains vigilant as far as our abilities to assist in that should come back up as far as someone.
It's unfortunate, okay. And then two kind of related things. What is our approach to vacant property? Not necessarily abandoned, but empty buildings? Can they sit empty forever?
Under the codes, yes, laws are maintained for after. At least under code enforcement for nuisances, as long as they've been maintained for after. I mean, there's several houses I know that we've encountered over the last year that they've been abandoned since I've been.
And that's, as long as they're not in any violation of code, that's the way it is?
I don't know of any other great tips.
Yeah, typically what we do is we make sure that it's secure. You know, a lot of the houses that we do have that are vacant are typically bank-owned type properties or REO type properties, so it's hard to try to identify owners. It's one of the issues that we do fall into. But at the end of the day, what we're doing is just trying to ensure that they are at least kept and secure.
Are you talking about commercial?
Both, actually. Commercial and residential, because we don't want a large number of empty properties in town. We want to try and avoid that, I'm sure. So commercial, looking at the commercial side of that question, what do we know about Thriftway?
Well, let me really quick. If a building is vacant and nobody is living in it, what often happens is if it gets in the rears, that means somebody's not paying taxes on it, we do have the ability to take those things through the land bank eventually.
Right.
Through that process. So the city can come involved in that. We do try to keep our finger on that as far as where things are at in the pipeline. More often than not, people, somebody's paying taxes somewhere, so they can delegate to that extent. As far as the Thriftway, I know that the owners of the property are still actively trying to find a buyer for the building at this point. That's, that's really all I know.
Is it listed?
It is listed. They have it listed as one of the owners, the owner is a real estate agent. I'm not sure how it's listed.
Okay. I haven't seen it on Loop Net or nothing.
Yeah, I don't think it's there, but I think they're trying to sell it.
Okay.
Their own means.
Can that go on indefinitely?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Until they become in violation.
In violation, yeah.
Yep. I just wanted to thank the police for that wonderful conference, what was it, Coffee and Conversation. Just every question you were asked, you were wonderful, and the depths of the city and the, I really appreciated that. And we're going to do it again, right?
Sir?
With as much as I openly tried to rag on Wind Dot County, our representatives are still absolutely worthless, but I would like to extend a thank you to Sean and even some of Mayor Alvy's staff for the help in my basketball holdup sessions and my rants. The evaluations came back in for the Deppenball property stuff. And in 2012, after our representatives decided to try and fail us and drop all that to 1,693,000, through our paperwork and some of the help that Sean and Senator Braun gave me, it just got reappraised at 4.7 million. So that took, it was 62,000 that was going to the county, and now it'll be 185,000. And in 2019, 30,000 of that directly will be coming to the city. About, I don't remember what the mill difference is for the school district, but what is it, another 30 will be going to the school district. So about 60,000 will be coming back, because we actually looked into it. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. My diatribes had an impact.
Sir? Nothing. Very good. I did have an opportunity to meet with the Wind Dot County mayors this last week, and I would like to thank all of our city staff and our city council for working together so wonderfully. It's an honor to be here and do the very best we can. It sounds as if other places might have more challenges than we do.
Well put.
Not only potholes in Bonner Springs, but also with the way the moisture came and the cold weather came, we've had a lot of concrete disintegration, or chipping, or scaling, or whatever you want to call that. So those are, I've noticed a lot on sidewalks. The city's going to be looking at that in different areas and how best to go about cleaning it, repairing it, what our options are. I know some of, even the bricks on Oak Street have failed, and those were about as tight in there as you could get. So, so those are things that are in the process. It's not something we can do overnight, but it's, it's something that's being recognized and put on the list. If you have concerns across the community, please encourage people to let the city know. There'll be a list. I know it's not pothole level of intensity, but it's something that we need to be aware I appreciate the Police Department and their conversation. I wasn't able to make that, but I've heard a lot of good review on that. I think the Police Department has taken an active stance in community relations with the social media involvement that you have and our community action team, and that will be more noticeable to the community as we make our way through spring also. And I would like to compliment all of you on that. I know it takes extra, extra effort, and the benefits are indirect, but I think they're also extremely valuable, and I appreciate that. The work that we're doing on the water line on Clark, Emerson, Shite, and something else. It was, it was CES for a long time, but then it became morphed into more. But what's the status of that and how's that going?
They're continuing to pursue that, and the Public Works Department has the responsibility to actually manage the water as they go through and replace the mains. And what we're finding is that sometimes we've got to go back two and three, or sometimes more, valves, find valves that work.
Wow.
And so that's, that means you have a wider and wider and wider net of people who get the water shut off. And so as we do that, we're trying to make sure we're replacing every one of those valves as well when we find them, so.
Good deal.
It takes a couple hours more for each one of those valves, but we're spending the time to go ahead and replace them while we're there. We've already made the mess, we've already irritated people.
Amen.
Get the valve replaced, so we don't have to irritate them again.
Yeah. So it's 50%?
Yes, I'd say probably 50%.
Great. And then after that will come the cleanup or the restoration of sidewalks and approaches and things like that?
A lot of work to do. When it gets a little warmer.
Oh, yeah. It's.
The water lines will come first, and they've got at least two months, I'd say, of just water line work.
I've heard it's spring now, so we, we didn't, or summer, I guess. We, we only have two seasons now, summer and winter. So take your pick, summer or winter.
Thirty-two for a change, I'm loving it.
Yeah.
This week.
I appreciate that. I would continue to ask everybody to be careful at spring break and make sure, coming up, make sure that you're aware of all the pedestrians and all the, the young people that are using our city streets and sidewalks, streets mostly it seems like. But other than that, I stand for any questions? Yes, please?
Actually, not a question for you, so don't be offended.
Don't.
Happy for staff. I just was thinking about this. Hopefully this is not the inappropriate time. Do we have a status update on the employee who was involved in the auto accident?
She is recovering at home.
Good.
I don't have a timeframe, but she's in good condition. Obviously, you know, a bad accident, but as far as I know, not a major. But again, she is recovering at home at this point.
Send her our very best. Yeah.
And thank you for sending out announcements for things like that, because we do need to know prayer and things like that.
Unless there's anything else, we're adjourned.